Lot line adjustment, so we'll leave it open for that. And we'll just continue with the lot line adjustment and part of it there, then we'll vote for the completed application. On the next one, the next hearing comes up. And the waivers on that. Is that all right? Okay. Continue with the lot line.
So we have two sheets that we've submitted for both lot line adjustment and subdivision. So as part of this, there's six existing lots, six lots. The boundary line adjustment would be breaking out parcels, A, B, C, D, and E. We need to do the same addition. These are the existing lots here. So we correlated with this outline for tonight is the colors that are outlined in pink would match the proposed. Outline full boundary of the bank, so that that lot has this parcel B added here. Um, that contains the existing foundation that was built. And that would utilize an existing driveway easement here off of the north entrance off of the driveway that goes to the rest. Or the former restaurant. So that remains, this parcel gets larger. The next one down the street parcel here, there's a small skinny piece in the back that would be added, so this parcel D is added to this green lot. Um, I touched it, it's where the grade drops off and it's the backyard of that lot, so that's got that small skinny piece was added to that. Similar to the next, this yellow outline piece, there is also a small boundary line adjustment there, so this this line that was defined is is basically follow the top of that bank, so behind the restaurant comes back and the bank is ramped up. So these pieces that are added are basically small lawn pieces that belong to the homes. So that's why those were added.
Those are to twenty-nine thirty?
Those are to twenty-nine thirty, correct. Moving down towards twenty-six, this this portion here was was bumped out adding the parcel in the back. Sectioning off this and then twenty-five also sectioning off parcel A. So these parcels here end up getting added to the subdivided lot. So out of all of this, there's one lot that's created. Um, trying to create this this lot here and then adjusting the lot lines of these other portions here.
You're very clear so far, I'm just not understanding why the shapes of the purple and the green on the bottom most. It just seems strange, Jen, just wanna know what you think it was, why did you shape the um, the western?
Why did you draw those lines, you know?
Yeah.
At the, bring that one down there, so you see that?
It's here.
Yeah, why is that line drawn?
It's odd.
And she's asking why is it drawn that way instead of like straight across, there's a little jog out of that purple one down into the green one. So you know, it's a jog from the green one into the body, weren't going, she's just asking what the purpose of that is.
What you think it was?
Yep, so let me work with the applicant on on determining where these lot lines were, or where they. So.
Did you need to make up some some acreage or something, or just?
Well, we end up with with we're over the minimum acreage. Th- this would be, if you trim this off, you would be under, because we're at one point two one four acres, it's a minimal one acre.
Uh huh.
So we did have to gain some acres there. For this lot, and then this lot is about roughly the same, it's one point two five, so you're one point two four acres here, so that. This needed to be bumped out, adding this portion.
Why not just follow the zoning lines? Separation of business and residential.
It might not have.
These would not meet the areas of the.
They had less than one acre.
That would make these.
Less than one acre in there if you done that.
What we were thinking of doing originally was since it was smaller.
Yeah.
Go for draw the line right across. But just so that, I figured it would go through right off the bat easier, since you had the twenty-five percent grade here more. We added on and went over so that, you know, it's, you know, we show. That more than an acre of.
Yeah, it's true, because if you had less than the one acre, you can't make a non-conforming lot, more non-conforming or non-conforming lot period, so yeah, that's.
Well, not including that um, twenty-five percent grade.
And it it doesn't matter, you know, wherever you wanna draw the lines, you know, that's up to you guys there, we're just curious, so these are gonna, these are the conforming lots. But yeah, as long as you have the over one acre there, which you do, point two on each other.
Correct.
Yeah.
These two lots are under behavior uh, or adding toward the non-conformity. That's enough.
Yeah. So that's. Yes, so questions from the board? It's laid it out pretty well, what's going on. Uh, it's again, a lot of moving pieces there, but it's explained. See what's going on. So questions. Then question of public. So if there are no questions to the applicant, everyone gets it, and then we'll close the public hearing. Right, all the hearings closed. Again, we can deliberate and we know what they're doing, what they're trying to achieve and uh. Right, so. Um, if there are no issues with it, then motion to approve the lot line adjustments would be in order.
So moved.
I'll second, motion by Victoria to approve the lot line adjustments, seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those favorite? Next up was the subdivision. So he's already gone through the completed application checklist for the subdivisions, and they're looking for a couple of waivers on there. And the waivers are the scale, which is obvious, the larger the R scale, that piece of hit would have been twice as big as that. And also. What was the other one there, I know I have it written down here.
The soils, uh, per cuts and.
Oh, your per cuts, yeah, per test. Yeah, a waiver for the per test.
If I may, a board for development on the proposed spot, that would come in before the board as a as a second.
Lot of land there, and it's a drainage or anyways, for the system, but right, the sewer systems on the other side.
Yes, I could, I could highlight if you want, I have a hide there, so.
There's, and it, it show a line, right, on your existing conditions, show the line, I guess coming from that, new prepared lot of yours. Over to the existing anyway.
Yeah.
Is that right, Bill?
On the sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That comes to extend out until there are, or could extend out to that pump station.
This is the pump station here.
Yep.
There's a line from that foundation, there's a line restaurant. There's a line of clean outs all through the area that.
And and.
That could serve that lot, yeah, that could serve that lot. The line then comes up here with clean outs. The southern portion. Manhole. Then a lot of connections to the sewer here. And so it. It comes here, it pumps. There's a manhole here that it pumps into and then it grabs these gates, so this is all the existing sewer, so. So there is already service to this area of property that's that's capped and has clean outs uh, every eight feet down this area.
So that seems to be good for the perk test anyway, because they've already got that line that they could use, it could even go either way. They put a system there, why, why do with a protest or go that line there, so. They're looking for a waiver for that and a waiver for the scale, I'm seeing, oh, why won't you grant them? Okay, motion by Richard Lane that we grant the two waivers requested, one was for the scale, to boost it up to sixty feet per inch, and the other one more to not have protests. Seconded by Mark, is there any further discussions? All of the favor can give the same eye. All is a vote. Okay, waivers are granted, now we know the application is complete, saw that, we can vote on the application. After that, anybody. You made the presentation, so we aren't gonna make a new one over here, so. Any issues on the application being completed? So a motion that the application is completed. Motion by Michael York that the application is complete and ready to go to public hearing.
Correct.
Is there a second, second, second of our opinion, is there any further discussion? All those in favor can give the same eye. Okay, in the public hearing, and we can present your subdivision.
So on the subdivision side, as mentioned before, we're creating one new lot, so. Part of one oh eight dash twenty becomes two lots. Uh, the for the proposed lot of one oh eight twenty, that has the former Nick's Restaurant on it, so that stays there. Um, with the creation of a four point eight two two meter lot, that would be one oh eight dash twenty dash one. So that's created between the boundary line, just like these two portions off the back and the subdivision off of this portion. Um, so we have more than a frontage on group ten. The remaining portion of the lot that's divided also has. Be twenty-five feet of required frontage. And one acre is the minimum per acreage, we're at one point seven four for the parcel that has the restaurant on it and four point eight two two. Newly created lot. As mentioned. There is a existing permit with DOT for three curb cuts that was on this lot.
That was on the original uh, permit you said, right?
Yes, so.
When you got the lot there, that was great, you know, one would service that.
Correct, so we have the lot roughly where it is. Uh, if this is developed somewhere coming back to the planning board, that would have to go back to DOT approval on that driveway.
Take another look at it to see if we get, and if it was developed, they might not want the driveway there.
And then. That's basically it, so there's no plan on development of this right now, it just creates the lot, so they can sell a lot separately of the lot.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
Just an observation, I think it's a big improvement over what it was before, you know, it's before usable. Yeah, and I like the way that it basically lines up with the zoning district.
It cleans up.
Yeah, it does.
Any questions from the public, from this? I don't think you have any question there, I think this would be.
These lots remain of the homes back here, this lot gets larger, these marginally get larger with the backyard, this. Um, this becomes one lot, this is the new lot. This is where the Nick's Restaurant, former restaurant was, this becomes its own parcel. So this lot can be sold. So, so all of these remain in the neighborhood. This is how lots are.
Yeah.
These two are longer, these two are are smaller than what was in this one.
So where's California Street on this?
It would be down here. Yeah, this lot, this lot.
So that's all I need now.
Anyone else have any questions on this? No more from the board? Then I will close the public hearing, public hearing closed. And again, another straightforward proposal, buying that part on two, actually more presentable for development. Well, second, motion to approve the subdivision by Victoria, seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those in favor can give a saying aye. And you have to say it all. Hey, you're welcome. Next up would be the Mount Senior subdivision. Having that, that's a step line, we're discussing it, the architect. And. The center a little bit. You have a chance to set up here with the school.
Yeah, I just wanna let you know, I'm town Lauren, I'm the business administrator for the school district. Um, I did bring with it, um, Andrew Day, he's our owner's project manager.
Janelle, Janelle Lauren?
Janelle.
Janelle, yeah, okay, thank you, go ahead.
Uh, should I brought with me Andrew Day, he's our owner's project manager. And Kyle Barker from Barker Architect, um, we have to take for our project. Presenting, but we all wanted to be here and support them. And, and the question takes my time, I was pressing, Parker. It's Parker, P A R B E, you're welcome.
Hi folks, uh, thanks, you know, said the Kavlar here, projects. Um, because it's a a courtesy review by the planning board, I hope it's still okay for a little bit. Less formal is the last application. Uh, what I thought I'd do is give you a little bit of a history, walk through the site plan, I've also got some exterior news, figured those are all that's interesting. Right, uh, as you probably aware, uh, the town voted on this project in March two thousand twenty-three. We've been working forward with the design since then. Uh, the plan is that when we did the study, reviewed the two schools, Mount Caesar and Cutler, and determined Cutler as a difficult site to do any kind of development, it's a fixable props they had, it didn't seem worthy of uh, uh. Doing that at that site, so the decision was to buy both elementary schools onto the Mount Caesar site, where we have a lot more room to work. That's a lot saving for the kids and it's a lot uh, convenient for the parents to get one school instead of two. Uh, so the Mount Caesar existing elementary school, it is in this location off of uh, Old Homestead Highway and the intersection of Soria's Cross Road. The existing building is kind of an F-shaped building with a couple of uh, lanes heading north and one heading uh. East, and what we're doing is to uh, connect these wings with a new addition out the back. The existing front entrance is down in this corner, near the roundabout. Uh, that corner is a little bit awkward, we're getting a lot of cars through, we can't afford uh, getting people in and out. So we move the new front entrance to the back of the building. So I want to point that out first, then to go through the, through the the traffic paths. Uh, because it's a larger elementary school than it was before, we build a lot of traffic coming through. You've got buses, you've got parents dropping off and then taking up at the afternoon. And it's really important as a school to make sure that those things happen uh, safely, to keep the buses and cars separated. Uh, the current uh, entrance is in somewhere around here, but we're uh, moving it down slightly, and we're going to realign the entrance to the elementary school with the entrance to, or the exit uh, from the high school. If the two are red cross with each other, it just makes it a little bit safer.
And that's on room thirty-two, right?
That's on room thirty-two.
Thanks.
Uh, so yeah, the current entrance to the high school is in this location, and then the exit is always here, we're moving it down just slightly in order to realign it with the the new entrance uh, to the elementary school. Uh, generally, people come in, they come down, and they spin around a new uh, circle at the new front entrance. This is designed intentionally to direct people to the right place to get to the new front entrance, the new front entrance. Entrance to be well defined, so people know where they're going. Uh, there's some visitor parking areas here, then a new large parking lot on this side. Uh, for teachers parking, this would be more for visitors with some teacher parking. We've added uh, teacher parking along the existing road, you currently come in and spin around down this direction. We've added parking along that. It comes by the existing front entrance, and there's an existing parking lot as well over there that will also remain. Lastly, there's an existing uh, softball field that is here that's used by the high school. Uh, that we can't lose that, so what we decided to do is to take that ball field and relocate it behind the school. So we're taking basically the same size and shape, and just moving it back. Along with that, then we added parking, it's a gravel parking lot along the side of that, that is primarily for use by the fields. The concept here is that we don't want um, uh, people parking for the fields to conflict with staff that might be coming and going from the school. So when this uh, ball game starts, right about the end of uh, the school day, we don't want that traffic foot thing, so we're bringing them straight up through, but uh, a place to park. Most of the students would probably still park at the high school and walk across, not a good reason to line up the driveways, so now there's a uh, crosswalk across the Old Homestead Highway, the sidewalk all the way down the ball. The rest of the fields would remain largely as is with a little bit of reconfiguration. Um, there's some existing practice fields um, and open play space that will remain. We are pushing the fields back a little bit into the current woods in order to uh, maintain the same amount of fields, uh, same amount of practice, it's been, when this new ball field gets built, it kind of uh, displaces some of those. So we're trying to maintain the same amount of useful area for the for the school. Uh, in this, there is a an existing uh, setting system that was built, I believe uh, at the time of the original building, so we're talking the setting system back to the fifties. Uh, well, we're building a new setting system in this location between a couple of the uh, practice fields in order to service not just the existing building, but also the expansion for the for the new wood dish. Uh, sometimes when I get going, I go pretty fast, so is it okay to stop for questions?
You you refer to buses, I, what what is the situation for buses?
Sure, so um, uh, we go through the uh, pickup and drop off periods. The buses uh, generally come at, so, let me start with the first. Uh, there is with this number of students and the state in age is a lot of parents that picking or dropping off at the pit. And so we calculated the number of cars and designed the driveways such that all the cars can get off the street without being waiting on the street. We want them queued up along the driveway, not in the street. So what we've done is this driveway in that brings to the main entrance is actually double lane one way. So that way you can get two uh, layers of cars queued up, standing, waiting for other students to get let up. When it comes around to the circle, it reduces to one lane. So that way, it's just one car at a time picking up students, so that way there's a lot of queuing space, but then it's a lot safer, you don't want kids going in between cars to get to to another car. That wasn't enough queuing space, so what we decided to do is take this driveway and also widen it into a double lane access and have the existing uh, main entrance being a pickup and drop off zone as well. So that way, basically, they'll they'll probably divide it up by name, so that way if there's uh, two students from the same family, but in different grades, they can be picked up in the same location. So you'll have some students being picked up here, some students being picked up here. That way, it it again, the whole point is to try to get all cars off the off the. Yeah.
So where, how do they exit from that new entrance?
So cars would come in, stack here, up to here, spin around, pick up the students, and then leave through the parking lot and back out the entrance. For these students, people would come in, stack in through here, reduces down to one lane where they would pick up, and then they've been exited through the parking lot and exit out onto Soria's Cross. Buses uh, would come in Soria's Cross and Road and come through this driveway in the back, which would be buses only. And stack a lot here behind the cafeteria. They would then spin around this loop and head back out Soria's Cross and Road. So there's no conflict between the cars and the buses, they're completely separate locations from the drop off. Uh, the only area might be as uh, buses are leaving, there might also be cars leaving, but keep in mind, cars are standing here, there's only one car at a time picking up, it's not a constant flow. Uh, and that the buses are generally when they're, when they're picking up in the afternoon, are already waiting, so they're already in here before the cars start showing up. Cars are waiting here, buses are waiting here, once the students are loaded, they can leave pretty easily, and they can leave pretty easily as well. One of the concerns that we had was, we didn't want this pickup and drop off to interfere with the uh, parking. Because if you've got cars standing in the parking lot, then the cars can't leave. So we stopped them here to allow teachers to be able to leave, and then only let let them go one at a time. So the parking lots, even though there's there's exit through the parking lots, uh, the the uh, the standing cars that we created, that blockage are completely isolated from the parking, with the exception of this area, which is mostly a overflow park.
So the ball field parking is really not accessible while those cars are queued up.
Uh, no, wouldn't be accessible uh, un- until that frees up, but think about the the amount of time that those cars are there. If cars would start to park waiting as much as what, twenty or thirty minutes ahead of time? But once school lets out, it'll start to book their bus.
And then to exit from the ball field parking, you kind of come down, you know, turn around and come back straight up. But that's one way to go.
During during pickup and drop off.
Is that enough bus parking over there? What is there, only five buses, or is that six?
There's there's five buses plus some extra space around it, and it's currently, how many buses?
I believe that's what we.
For old schools?
Yeah.
Like from Mount Caesar now in Cutler?
They, all of the students ride the same buses, what they do now is they drop off at at Mount Caesar and then they go to Cutler. Some buses do it that way, and then some buses drop off at Cutler first, and then drop at Mount Caesar, because you could have kids from the same families because of the grade spans. Um, it would just be too much to have separate buses for each school.
Yeah. So it's still the same buses, same buses.
Yeah.
So any other questions on the parking? Other things on the side?
I do have a question about the communication between those two traffic circles.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah.
Emergency.
Okay, is there gonna be, what's gonna be there to restrict traffic from moving through there?
Curbs.
Okay.
So that way, basically, I want to make sure that there was full access for fire vehicles all the way around the building. So a bit of small area here, but the uh, uh, fire effort, that's not a big deal for for a voucher. But we keep the the cars going across. So above the the bus parking here, so that the buses are only there at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day, during the day, and so. Um, the cafeteria is in this location, the playground is this boss area here, which would be fully fenced in. Uh, the existing pavilion that you see out there is right at the end of this this lane inside that playground fenced in area. Students would have access to that bus loop during the day, or the hardscape playground, so we'll have a couple of basketball backstops that allow them to use that, and then it connects into the the fenced in playground area, and then that connects into the open uh, ball field area, if they're playing soccer during during the recess or whatever. The entire uh, property would also be fenced in, so once the students in there, it's secure. It keeps the students from uh, leaving the the ball field, but it also uh, limits the amount of unauthorized people coming on the site. Uh, there there are incidences of people walking the dog during the day through the ball fields and and at at a school in this day and age with all the worries about active shooters and and whatnot, that's not a good thing, so we're trying to restrict the amount of unauthorized access and also restrict the amount of opportunities for kids to be able to leave the site.
What's that, can you describe the fence, like how tall it is, it should be pretty tall, huh?
It's uh, six foot? Or four foot?
She says it doesn't matter, it's it'll it'll stop the dog walk, anything.
Exactly, exactly.
I believe the existing fence that's there is four foot, and I believe we are matching that, but I'm not one hundred and fourteen percent certain. Um, and we did get funding for that through the state grant.
I think that would be. Um, the one thing this does do uh, besides the site uh, that's exterior is that the again, the shape of the building is such that we're connecting into uh, this end wing, then around, then to the middle wing, and then to the wing that's parallel with Soria's Cross and Road, leading to open courtyard in the middle. Uh, at first, we were concerned about this because it means a maintenance issue, but we've worked hard on making sure that there's plenty of drainage. Uh, that the area would be less safe such that it would be easy to maintain. But the opportunity here is to have an outside classroom space within the secure perimeter of the building. During COVID years, uh, we learned that outdoor space is is a very valuable space. And I thought this is an opportunity to to accentuate that in the future. Does it make sense?
What's the substrate gonna be in those areas?
The substrate?
Yeah.
Um, uh, good question, uh, if I'm doing a courtyard for another school right now, what we did is uh, half grass and half stone dust with some drainage in the middle. That way, basically, it's actually go washing paths and whatnot, it's all the cars. That way, basically, it's also goes washing paths and whatnot, it's all the cars. Plus it's big mugging them, but the the grass there is simply.
And then how are you handling the evacuation of that water that's in there? You just have like a retention pond or?
Yeah, we've we've got we've got several catch bases that have to take it out and and put it into the drainage system. Um if you want me to highlight the the drainage system, what we've got going here is that. Essentially, follow this properly, we've got two areas of uh trees. There is a detention pond over in this location uh close to the old Homestead Highway. That basically drains the front and this this area of the parking lot. And then there's another one, uh it's not a detention pond, it's more of a grass swale in the in the back. Uh that handles the drainage from the northern side of the building, catches it along that uh underground. Right from this this point here up to the this uh rip route and through uh this direction, heading towards the uh towards the river. We do have uh an alteration in training permit in hand from the state. Uh uh second permit, all the permits necessary from the.
Yeah, but on Sawyer's Crossing, are they gonna have to make that entrance and exit there much wider? It's very small now for buses and cars coming in there now.
Uh what we've got designed is not a little bigger, but it's it you can see where the permission comes out of the point, that yeah, that that exit is about the same as it is now.
Even though now there's gonna be buses and cars coming in and out?
It's a good question, I should follow up with the civil engineer, which is Fieldstone, it sounds like the guy's. I'll I'll talk to Jana.
I love the overlapping of uses, you know, multiple uses of space, give, you know, it's just to see smart, like a smart design.
Then you try to learn, uh you try to learn on on the building, so I would like to see the building then, sir.
Exactly, and I keep up on the traffic, you did a good job, because I know the concern of a lot of people, what I've talked to is about the traffic backing up around the schools and stuff.
Yeah.
At that time.
Well, we at first we only had this loop and then when we started talking with the principals and the staff, realized, well, that was.
It's easier on all on the staff too.
Yeah, yes. So there's there's a lot of that.
Just one more thing before you do that, how about the the buffer zone, the buffer areas, you're increasing the distance that those fields go back or you're taking down? Or in the in the back to extend the uh the ball field to the play fields?
Uh that's mostly in this area here, which there's a fair distance still, I mean, you can see this.
Is that, is that your buffer line?
This this is a setback line here.
Okay.
So we're nowhere near the setback. Uh there are sometimes way up here, and this is still a considerable distance, and then you've got the river on the side.
And where you have your uh the new driveway coming in Route thirty two. How is that in relation to where the ball field is now, the fence, so we'll say the outfield fence of the ball field?
Thank goodness.
Trying to picture out how much further it's coming out, curious, you know, where the existing ball.
It was essentially right here.
Okay, so it's taking a pretty much out to the outfield's uh fence of the ball field. And it looks like where that driveway is coming straight, that's about where it's gonna be.
I wish I had done what John Newton had done and brought the existing condition plan, if he did, uh so I I can't fully answer that question.
It looks like it might.
Yeah, I right now, I don't believe that the high school uh exit and the school entrance line up, they're they're offset. And so what's happens is the crosswalk isn't where the driveway is. Uh so we're moving both of them in order to get the crosswalk going straight across.
Moving both of them and the high school one as well?
Yes, the high school one is right here right now, it's only moving about, you know, forty or fifty feet. Uh whereas the the uh current uh school one, I believe, is here, so way over. And that's moving a distance down.
And the new addition is the dark part that we see on this part? There any room for future expansion there or any ideas on future expansion?
The 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 design is such that there is expansion within the the current foot foot. Uh there's, we we did a pretty exhaustive study on enrollment projections. Uh we've we've talked a lot about uh the developments that have been happening. And so we set the number of classrooms based on future development, but there's, I mean, there could be some additions to this, but it's not necessarily. We feel it's big enough to handle what what we see in the future. What with the enrollment objection shown uh is that uh. As the baby boom generation ages and you've got the uh dare children, roughly the millennials. They're having fewer and fewer kids, so the the bumps, the the bubbles that we see coming through are kind of like ripples in a pond, where you've got a big one, a little one, and a small one. We don't feel that even with the development that's going on, that the children being born are really gonna see uh what we've designed into into this for extra capacity.
How far out did you go with those projections?
We're gonna go about, well, we, well, what's what's difficult with enrollment projections is you're accurate for the data that you have. Which is only five years, because you go from birth to the first grade, after that, it gets a lot easier, so. Basically, when the current births through twelfth grade, we've got twelve years of good data to work on, after that, it's kind of a guess. Uh so we did go out like twenty years, but you know, I don't take take the name of the past twelve as anything, really. It wouldn't have significantly been a goal or two.
What are your questions? Play area?
Yeah.
Second, in that fenced scenario or?
Yes, so there the existing playground equipment we're assessing for being able to reuse, we're planning on essentially a whole playground. And there's two playground areas, this one, the existing is over here, it kind of ends through the where those trees are. It'll be a little safer and more secure, it's pretty robust equipment, that is what we're we're looking into. There'll also be a second playground for the smaller kids, so kindergarten, uh preschool and kindergarten, we use this play area, but we designed for the smaller kids. Uh everyone else would use the bigger playground.
I would be close also?
Yes, it'll be best.
This is one, I'm at age, you have uh equipment that you might be getting rid of, you might want to talk with the recreation department, see if they have any authority. Well, they have some ideas, things they're doing.
I actually do have a question for uh Mr. Parker um regarding your phasing um with demolition and the. Uh site work, um should you plan on working around, you know, school schedules and extracurricular schedules, things like that, what that's gonna look like?
Yeah, it's a full year project, so we'll definitely be working during the school year. So the plan is that school, soon as school lets out in June, uh it's harder constructions, the construction manager is gonna be running this. They're going to mobilize, secure the site, their entrance is gonna be on this side and they'll fence off their their layout area from the rest of the school. We're gonna get the plate built uh such that. Uh but what we want to basically use this area for. There's a that they build this wall inside, keep all the school.
Speaking this true?
This true.
Is there any questions out there, maybe when they're gonna start?
They're gonna start soon. Uh they uh it'll start in June, um ju- just sort of ideas, we'll we'll have foundations going in by September. Uh superstructure going out through the the fall, hopefully start getting it closed in January, February. Uh with it uh to be, you know, ready for occupancy by the fall, September. And then is what the school would look like. Uh so this is the new front entrance looking from basically the uh new softball field in. Uh this is the loop that comes around that I showed you along the site plan, this is, there's a uh porch entrance. Uh identifying where the the main entrance is. It's an important design, um a part of the building and uh having a porch allows for students that are waiting for their parents to bring them while they're waiting. It allows for parents who want to uh go in uh and get checked in at the doorway to not, you know, be out of the elements in in some way. Uh while they're while we're approaching the building. And also it just allows a a more human scale to the design, so that way they're approaching a two-story building all at once. This is gonna be a two-story building. And a concern that that we've had in doing that is that it's gonna hold well, it exists. So this is a view, I know it's probably not small, you can focus in the back, I do have an extra set, so that way we'll have two sets that we're looking at all more closely. The existing front entrance is a small um one-story with a with a porch in front, and then you've got the. You'll chimney on the sides, the existing uh vaulted purpose room. And then the the original building was a one-story fairly flat building. When we get to the new building, what we decided to do is carry that line of the one-story all the way through and change the site, so the. Uh first floor would be brick, the upper floor would be uh vertical uh cement board side. And so from the street, this is basically the driveway uh parallel to Old Homestead Highway, you've got the latest addition in this location. And then the new two-story in this location, again, we carried brick around one story and then added uh. The two-story behind it, this is actually set back, so there's a little bit of break, uh you can't see that in that chair. Uh what you see behind here is actually the uh addition on the further back, so we're not adding on top of that old one. When you come around the backside of the building, you've got the uh the ma- the main entrance and then the gymnasium next to it. And next to that is cafeteria, so the 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 height of the building kind of shifts a little bit based on use, the gymnasium is much higher. It is basically the same height as the uh the two-story, but the cafeteria is a little bit lower. And then the one-story is a little bit lower than that, so we're utilizing the spaces that try to create some interest to break up the size. And then you see the bus, bus turn around, the backside here, yeah, cafeteria. I've certainly got a lot more images and uh and views that I shared with if there's more interest in seeing. Uh the color of the building, these uh renderings didn't really show it very well, um but we're gonna match the. The the brick, although that's not an easy thing to do, this is already like three times brick on there, we'll we'll match what the historic original brick was. And then the uh current signings, actually, the existing signings, actually, in a stucco finish. And we're not doing stucco, uh but we'll match as close as you can the color of what that current stucco is, that way. The new addition hopefully blends in with the existing, it doesn't look like it was not meant to be.
Can I ask you one question about the gym?
Sure.
Will that gym be large enough so that you can have a divided gym so that the uh basketball teams. Girls, boys be practicing at the same time?
Yes.
It's good, it will be an official-sized gym comparable to my dad.
It'll be a a junior high or a middle school-sized gymnasium, it'll have a dividing curb in the middle, so you can have two practice courts going on at the same time. But the games, race, current, uh full size, uh uh basketball. I do have a four minute, so I'll use your length where you. So you've got um the main entrance coming in. The uh administrative offices here, this vestibule would be a secure vestibule. Anybody entering the school would have to come into the main office and not want to go anywhere in the building. Uh after hours, however, um there's a door here that can be locked, a door over here that can be locked, a door here that can be locked, so that way. I will put it uh given access to the gymnasium, the library, the cafeteria, but they would never be able to get into the classroom wings of the building. The gym, like I said, is sized for a uh a middle school-sized gymnasium with some letrys on the side. And a uh platform, you know, not not a full stage, but a a performance area off the side of the gymnasium. There's uh canyons, toilets in this location that are sized properly for the uh full occupancy of the gymnasium. Uh and it's also near the cafeteria, uh the cafeteria is actually uh fairly large, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet. So that can be used for public gatherings and it will have a divided partition in the middle of that to also not be able to have uh dual use of the space. Uh a- and also just to reduce the amount of uh students in one area at one time, if you have cafeteria that big, it can be noise. And the maintenance is in the corner here, um and that way after hours, they can have deliveries off of the uh. Uh uh bus loop, again, no cars are allowed back here, but there is buses and deliveries uh at at before.
Is that kitchen?
Kitchen. Sizeable kitchen.
So how much of that is the new part of the school, not all of that, right?
Question, yeah, so uh here's the original front entrance, this is an existing wing. This is an existing wing and this is an existing wing. This is a new two-story classroom wing, it's the first floor, second floor. Then you get the new gym, new cafeteria, new kitchen and and maintenance area. On the second floor, again, a classroom wing, and we utilized some second-floor space for mechanical units. So most of the mechanical will actually be inside the building, not sitting on. And that's the upper part of the uh gym, stage, cafeteria, because it's it's more than one story of that.
So those could potentially be some expansion spaces, those the big empty big rooms that are up there?
These are actually pretty full of mechanical.
Are they really?
Oh yeah, our water systems up here are boilers are up on the second floor. Uh and these two are completely full of mechanical units. Uh what's kind of interesting is that uh the maintenance department. Uh this is the set upper floor of the or upper area of the maintenance area. They come up with a set of stairs, full sets, not full sets, they're the uh alternating stair. So that way they're not going up a ladder in order to get to the mechanical equipment, so it's a lot easier. And it's open with an open railing, so they can lift up mechanical, so before they fail us, they're not trying to get a small opening, they're very large opening. Uh and then in that point, it's a door on the roof that connects into all the roofs. So no climbing ladders, no, it gets to the mechanical equipment or or to check on who trains or anything like that. I joke, janitors are gonna come up here, come down into this room and scare people.
So in the um upper right corner, that's a little curved line that's faded, that's that's the old line from.
That's, yeah, that's the porch entrance, that's size of what that's pretty, it is size.
How many boilers do you have?
I'd I'd have to look at either two or three, it's certainly not one.
On that same rumor curve?
Yeah, yeah, in this day and age, the boilers, the condensate boils so small, um they're just like that size, so I I believe there's three. Uh in that way, if uh basically you run it at a low temperature, it's more efficient that way, it's more condensing. And uh it it kicks on boilers as the demand increases, but it gives you the opportunity that if one fails, you still get two running next. Oh, I did did mention we will be drilling a new well. Um uh just because the uh the existing, this site seems to have a um. Uh you'd never know what you're gonna get type of situation with the water, so there's there's a couple of wells in the site, one produces a lot of water, one produces very little. Uh and then it's shared with the the high school, and the high school has very large tanks, so we're planning doing this, drilling a new well. The new tanks have Mount Caesar, but uh keeping connections between Mount Caesar and the high school. So that way, if something will happen with the high school, reverse the gallons and send it to our bank. Partly what the water can be restricted to to uh Mount Caesar.
Are you meeting any lead controls or any star controls or anything like that? I mean, I know it doesn't pretend to this, just prior notification.
Yep, um no, but I sent it to Insulin Buildings Group, they're an energy company, and they did an energy model on it. And the result was a twenty-one point four E U Y. Anything below twenty-five is considered net zero ready, so it's a very, very high-performance building. Actually, the the existing building was renovated, I don't know, about ten years ago. And I've done the analysis on the energy usage and this is. One of not the best performing buildings in district already with the additional even much more uh energy efficient.
Peter, by the boil?
Do you have anything with gray water or?
No.
No, okay.
School district is budget, it's tough to do some of those, I I would like to, uh I'm leading uh leading a professional. And so I try to incorporate uh energy efficiency wherever I can, but when it comes to costs and, you know. You know, public money, it's very difficult to do anything that's that's more than this. Yeah, all you can transfer there if you want and then get sent out, uh so we. Any questions, just uh contact me, contact Janelle. We'll be back.
Yeah, it's gonna be quite the project, it'll be a little bit tough, I bet I'm working on it during next year.
There's gonna be a little bit of discomfort for the education process during that time, but you know, we're prepared. They've gone through a lot of discomfort in existing builders so far, particularly the COVID, that's. You know, it's there's some issues there that that needs to be addressed and it's.
You said that there is some severe sign issues with the property, please, what was that?
Um the property line is only feet away from the building, and so if you're trying to uh do something to correct it. Uh what's going on with the building, there's just no space to do it. Um literally, I think it's uh, I've got a picture that I like to show people that uh on the left-hand side. Obviously, a paved uh driveway that says fire. But it's only about ten feet wide and any fire lane needs to be eighteen feet. And it needs to be like eighteen feet off the building, it's short by like twenty, thirty feet. It's signed as a fire lane, but it doesn't work that way. There's no no part of the building, say, uh and so just little things like that, and it's not even little things, but there's. Um there's evidence that the buses that come from the backside exit out the front. It's so close to the property line on one side of the building on the other, the buses are actually getting built. That's how close the property line is to the to the structure. Trying to fix all that, it's just impossible, and it's a three-story building in one one area, there's two two classrooms up on the third floor. And uh it's just. It's hard to fix the the fire code issues regarding regarding, you know. So this is a much better plans in terms of safety, uh function, now that I have one element.
Yeah, we just have to keep an eye on reuse of cover future. So.
I'll leave that to the smallies. Good.
And we have, and I'm dealing with today's non-public session, pardon me, sorry, public session discussion. And that will be conducted by Beverly and Stephen and Mike, that's to. The figures that are working, good include in our non-public sessions, if we ever have one against, the first one I've ever had, because I don't know what. Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, so um. For starters, well. You you have to have in the middle. She started was, first of all. The focus of non-public sessions comes from the statutory laws, comes from the rights, you know. You're a public entity, you are beholden to the public, and anything you do really can be. You have to have a very good reason to shut down your meeting so the public cannot be present. So the state of New Hampshire has what they call R S As, which are revised statutory annotations. I don't know why they use that term, I'll do what they do, everybody's voice is R setting. And there are lists of statutory reasons that you may go into non-public session. But that has to be one of those reasons. You can't just say, oh, we need to go in non-public because um. I don't want anybody to know what I'm saying, or something like that, you can't do that, you have to follow the statutory reasons. If you look at the statutory reasons, most of them do not apply to you, for example. The Board of Selectmen can call a non-public session when they are doing. A discussion about compensation of an existing public employee. So that is something that the Board of Selectmen can do because they are uh considering that person getting more compensation or even less. It also covers um the behavior of employees, so if the. The selectmen need to discuss that sort of thing, they can go into a special RSA, it's called RSA A. And it's about the compensation or of. Of uh or any kind of activity associated with an existing employee. They also have the right to go into non-public session for hiring, which is something you guys wouldn't be doing either. Uh if they're going to hire someone, they're gonna make an offer, the selectmen are going to approve that offer. But before it before it goes actually out to the candidate and the candidate accepts it, it has to go, it has to be a non-public. Because the candidate may say, no, I don't want that, I don't want that job at that pay rate or whatever. So and it goes into non-public session until that person has been hired and then it can come out of out of non-public. Oh, well, actually, it comes out of being sealed. Uh that's a another factor, so when you go into non-public, you do not need to seal the minutes. If you don't seal the minutes, that means that non-public session can be opened immediately, posted on a website so the public can see it. If you feel there's something about those minutes that is injurious to the reputation of someone other than the board. Say you are like to, so and that is one of the um. R S As that you may use, it's just called references to reputation. Say you need to discuss some element of an application that might negatively impact the reputation of a developer. For example, you may go into non-public to talk about that, you have the right to do that. You're doing that to protect his or her reputation, not yours, protect that person. Um and that can be sealed, if you feel that 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 it should be sealed because something is ongoing at the present, it's active. And you need to keep that private for now, you may do that. Uh any non-public session that is sealed needs to be investigated, looked at at least once a year. Because the state says you really should be not having a lot of these non-public sessions, they should be open to the public as often as possible. So what I do is one of my jobs is to look at the non-publics on a yearly basis. And recommend to Michael Bradley which one should be unsealed. The selectmen have the ultimate responsibility to unseal them, neither Michael nor I can do that. But I can make recommendations because the sake first that you have as many unsealed and open. Uh documents uh that have been in non-public as possible. So it's always think about this, like the state is always pushing you to make things public, they want you to be. Be very sure that when you go into a non-public, you have a valid reason, so you may do it under reputation. And you also possibly can do it under litigation, there is an RSA that's pertinent to litigation. If that litigation is something that affects this board, you may go into non-public under that RSA. They're listed as A, B, C, D, B is hiring, A is for compensation, et cetera. Um the the one that I'm talking about litigation, I believe, is E, I'm sorry, three, two, B, A. It's a long, big, long list of 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 numbers and letters. Um those are the only two possible that I can think of that you would have valid reasons to go. Now, when you decide to go into a non-public session, you need to be able to document the exact time you went into a non-public session. All those who were present at the non-public session. And who made the motion to go in, who seconded the motion, it has to be all documented. Uh you go into discussion, you discuss. Session to the end, someone has to move and the non-public session. When they do it in the uh the selectmen, they actually do it by roll call. And I would suggest that uh if I were present, I would give a roll call, in other words, I would call each of your names. And you would say yes or no, according to the the question. Open the session by roll call or close the session by roll call. That way, everybody's name is on there, is listed as as having been agreed to the to the opening or the closing of the non-public session. After it's closed, you may seal the minutes. And again, a motion has to be made by an individual who is a member to seal the minutes, and it has to be seconded, and that has to be reported as well. So the law information has to be kept in that document. Um and it gets put into in our, for our community. We have a a a portion of a server that is just dedicated to non-public documents. They're all there, the only people who can actually look at them are the selectmen, Michael Bradley, and whoever is taking the minutes, and and if I've taken them, I get to look at them as well. Um so there's, you know, there's a a record, there's always a record of every non-public session, all the people involved. What they said, et cetera, whether it was sealed or not, and eventually, if they are approved. And sealed, those dates will also be included. Non-session, the non-public session. They may seal. If we seal the minutes, do we get to see them again to approve them, and then they go back and are sealed once again? Yes, you see, you'll see a hard copy, what happens is you'll see a hard copy that would would all. Copy is destroyed, shredded.
When it's self-destruct.
Set them on fire. Uh they only end up being electrified. Because because of the nature of them, if if we do have to keep our copies home, we'll see if you go into town hall, books and books and books of. But our copies of minutes, but they're not, they're a little bit more sensitive, so we shred them and we. Any questions, I I just tried to emphasize how um careful. You have to be before you go into a non-public. It should be a rarity, and you should really have a firm idea in your head as to why you're doing this. As I said, a perfect example might be litigation, uh and you're going to, you're going to talk about somebody applicant. Um that is um creating us some kind of difficulties or issues. And you don't want, you want to protect the reputation of that applicant. It's I can't stress this enough, it's not to protect you guys, it's to protect the person that you're talking about. I would appreciate when we do go into a non-public to invite any people, I know how to do things the main speakers. Uh but uh if I'm not being wrong, does need to make sure they take good notes. But all the times, nobody.
Were present for that?
I shouldn't have been approved.
Trust me, or what I know, I really shouldn't have, I shouldn't even have had that non-public session, Mike. Because it wa- and and there wasn't much discussed about it, it was all it was was, well, you know what it was. Anyways, I I don't know, we may have another one who knows. Any other non-public session we've had has been with an attorney regarding litigation. And that was wasn't part of the meeting, it was just a non-public session, the planning board meeting with the attorneys and selectmen. We've had it before, but never have we had to go into a public, non-public session, except that.
Oh, so what you're referring to is if you're in a public meeting like now, going into a non-public.
You can't.
Part of the versus, well, no, it's the same thing, all those conditions that Beverly is talking about apply to the non-public session. Going will say we're meeting with an attorney over litigation or something, that's still a lot, if we have just like a whole meeting dedicated just to that.
But you don't have. You don't have to, so you could be in a regular meeting like we're doing right now. And what happens is you go into a non-public session in the public, in the public record, the public minutes, and it'll say. The planning board entered non-public session at such and such a time, who followed, the names, it doesn't have any of the discussion. It just has kind of a skeletal outline, this is the non-public session, it ended at this time, and then you can actually continue meeting. Okay, so it'll it can be a piece of a larger, in addition to that, and that non-public. Session gets done in separate documents. So it's part of the open public minutes that you went into session, it doesn't say what you talked about. And then you have a separate document that actually covers the material that you discussed. So you have two, actually, two places for a non-public, knowing.
But occurs quite frequently in certain meetings.
Yeah, they have.
They've been out so many times.
But what you see when you.
Yeah, but that was for different reasons.
By the way, you you would have to immediately go into the. The videos, you don't hear a video of a non-public session.
You usually let them stay clean up though.
We make them at your place.
Make you go like this.
Get to put your suit on.
Okay, that's all good stuff, I know, like. We've never gone over that at all, ever.
Yeah, but just be careful when you do.
And the specific reasons that you know.
And specifically, yeah, I can I can provide you with a list of the, why don't I do that? I'll provide you with a sheet of paper and you can share with everyone with all the RSA and the and the proper number, it's a big one.
Even in my notebook, if you can, you go in there.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Beverly. Um other business, and that would be Jane's laughter, I don't know if she went outside and something there, but. Um no, it's not for you, but Jane has noted that she's interested in being an alternate on our board. And.
Let us grab her before she changes her mind.
That's right, I know what I'm saying, you know, so the board can decide whether we want that as a separate agenda item somewhere. Or we can just vote it now, that's we accept Jane as an alternate.
Just vote now.
nominate Jane second as an alternate. Mark made a motion, okay, you nominated Jane, particularly as an alternate, okay, and Brandon seconded, is there any further discussion? Then all those are favorite, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's vote, okay, good, we have a third. See, what else do we have, but nothing on the minor, they heard what else we have with anybody else. So they're good in your, or anything else to discuss, bring up. There's nothing, we have our new selectmen back here, and you're gonna be here all the time, I guess, right?
I guess, yeah.
Although it's new, but just I'm going, so, because they used to be, you know, handed off to everybody.
Under the RSA, they can make an appointment, invite them, want a town, they have a patient.
Yeah, yeah, at that. So all you have to do is want it.
Okay, what do I really see about that?
A town clerk.
Okay, okay.
Just where you're in and uh then you just serve at the table of the board and you vote. If you aren't here, you don't be placed as an alternate.
You like, and that's only to directly do that responsibility entirely.
I don't know. No, I haven't seen it there, actually, I was just by the guessing, see it, but I wasn't looking for it, so I have to say.
Discuss in the future that issue that's in the paper.
That I am on the work, I.
I'm sure it's on everybody.
Coming into the town at a weird time for the for. At this meeting here, there's not really much discussed about that, we aren't gonna discuss it. Find out what's going on.
It is a light meeting next week, or it's a revolution now, may not, maybe not have any.
Okay, if if nothing else, then a motion to adjourn with Jane or.
Okay, that's what you.
Motion to adjourn by Brandon, is there? Seconded by Richard, is there any further discussions? All of the favorites, you can say aye. And we are officially adjourned.